Reports, he can do his when he gets here or something like that.
Okay.
I'm thinking I'll tell you. Do I have two minutes? I do. If you guys, once we get into it with all that's going on, want to go right after. Maybe through the, um. So you want a new business and all the discussions through the calendars and the conference stuff.
Okay, once we put to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I'd like to be here for the discussion. So you guys have been able to get in mine.
Like, why not?
Just.
They don't want to haul it back home.
Just. Mine was still spinning. Oh, there we go. I think Cam's got another ear infection, Michaela. Ran him down to the doctor here, we'll see.
Been twice through now.
Yeah, I guess.
Kidding me?
Just gonna kick?
Yeah.
Okay, they must, yeah.
They must, while we were spinning in our wheels here.
I clicked on that and it said, "We need to verify." I'm like. It's gonna be a long night if we have to verify every single time we click on it.
Maybe when we get to that part of the regular meeting.
Just the other.
Yeah. I got five thirty, so.
Okay.
Yep, five thirty.
Okay, it's five thirty. We're going to call this, uh, public hearing on proposed changes to order.
Yep, we're good.
Okay. And, Mr. DeZao, did you want to?
Yep.
Have any comments on that? Changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar?
So the first hearing is on changes, proposed changes, excuse me, for the current year's, um, calendar. And so the biggest thing that is on here is we have currently missed four days of school. And on the original calendar, we didn't have any potential makeup days or anything like that. So if we're adding and making them up as we discussed last meeting, we have to put that on the calendar. So right now, what they would be is the makeup days would be the proposed anyway. Originally, it was the seventeenth was the end of the quarter. We would continue going through school and then we have the twentieth through the twenty-third as potential snow makeup days. And then the twenty-fourth, if we need another additional day, it could potentially be the twenty-eighth, would be the teacher in-service days, the end of year in-service. So by wording it that way, right now, like I said, we have four makeup days, but that's the change. There is no other structural changes to the calendar.
Comments or discussions?
So, yeah. I'm guessing everyone is here to talk about the calendar?
Okay.
You can ask.
Okay. Is there, is there anybody, um, who would like to make any comments on the schedule change? For the calendar, for school, uh, makeup days? Okay. All right, that being said, can I, um, ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So I go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that is passed. We are adjourned. All right. We will now call the meeting of the public hearing for the twenty-four, twenty-five district calendar to order. And, Mr. DeZao, do you have any comments on this?
So this, this calendar is typical with the start date that we've done the last few years. A, a few changes on here, um, that we have talked about in work sessions and as a board that are implemented on the calendar. And then one change that is not on here, potential, depending on legislation, which I'll explain, but I'll show on the calendar here in a minute. But the, the biggest changes is on this calendar dismissing at two P M. on Wednesdays instead of two-thirty for P D. Kind of going back to our work sessions and discussions and goals for our P D., just having that increased time on Wednesdays. I know it's thirty minutes, but it gives us the opportunity to do a few additional things that we currently can't do. Um, as an example, one of the things that we talked about is the balance when they're like having curriculum meetings on the same days we have mentoring. And you have new teachers, they often miss out on that. So we're hoping more often now we can kind of divide that in half. Maybe they'll have mentoring for the first forty-five minutes and then the last half can still be a part of like the curriculum or the E L, E L A. reading, um, P D. The high school conferences would be now earlier in the fall and the spring. And then the middle school would move up in the spring only. In the fall, they would stay at the same timeframe. So if you look on here, what that means is we are proposing moving up the parent-teacher conferences to the twenty-fourth and the thirtieth of September. So, something I've heard since I've been here every year was, we gotta do something different with conferences. We need to move them up. We want to help kids at the high school level, I should say. Elementary has been very pleased with where they're at just because it takes the time to get to know your kids and things like that. But at the high school, especially for those kids that are struggling, to try and get that message out sooner. Every year, we've attempted to move. There's always been issues and it's never happened. It's stayed the same. So that's kind of where this is coming from. If it doesn't work, I guess it doesn't work, but we've never tried anything different in the last six, seven years. So that's where this is coming from. So the high school would be on the twenty-fourth and the thirtieth, separating that out. Then the middle school and the elementary would go to the traditional time of what we've done in the past after the end of the first quarter. The twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth of October. The first of November would then be that comp date. And then in the spring, basically, the conferences would occur on, I gotta look at my dates here, excuse me. The third and the tenth of February. And then the middle school would occur at that time as well. That was one of the suggestions. What if we did the middle school one earlier in the spring? By that point, they know them a little more and then hopefully can get them on the right track if there's a need. The elementary would still stick with the same date at the end of the third quarter like they have in the past with that comp date. So that's the biggest changes structurally there. And then I included at the end of the year some potential snow makeup dates. So that if we have just a handful of dates, we can discuss it, but we don't have to have another, um, forum and approval of that. We can just say, hey, we're gonna make them up on these days and still be good if that happens. Maybe we'll have no snow days next year. So that's the big changes. One of the proposed legislative items in the legislature is allowing us to have freedom on the start date. So right now, um, what runs things kind of tight is you cannot start before the twenty-third. So we're starting school on Friday, the twenty-third. Just with it working out and going up until we are on Christmas, right on the twentieth, because the Monday's the twenty-third. Just where the dates fall, that makes it really tight for dates and getting things done for families before Memorial Day. And Friday, kind of an odd date to start. So there's two proposals. Either it'd be, you could start the Monday of the week where the twenty-third falls. That was one. So you could go all the way back to the nineteenth. Doesn't mean that's when we'll start. I'm just saying that's when it's allowed. And then I think there's another proposal that's the Tuesday of the week of the twenty-third. I think the one might be worded the Monday after the state fair. And then the other one's the Tuesday of the twenty-third. So those are two out there. I don't know where it'll end up. So if one of those would pass, we could look at potentially moving that up. I would not suggest going to Monday or Tuesday, but we could do it and make like the first week a three-day week. But we couldn't do that until that passed anyway. But just being aware that that's out there.
Is there anybody that wanted to speak on the twenty-four, twenty-fives, uh, calendar? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second?
My second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Ask for the sheets now.
Okay. If there's anybody who would like to speak at the board meeting tonight, um, during the public forum time. We need you to fill out one of these sheets. They're up here on the table. So. And bring those up to us. Okay. Okay, with that, I will call this meeting to order. And I would ask for, uh, motion for the approval of the agenda.
So I go.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we will now go through our five school board basics. The first one is put the students first.
Follow the law and your own policy.
Respect the chain of command. Base decisions on shared objective information.
Operate in the public eye.
Okay. Next, we will move to our consent items. Is there anything in there?
There is a few more bills, mostly credit card bills that came in. Pretty, pretty standard, normal things.
And then I did want to point out under the resignations and early retirements, we have a para resigning. But we also have a teacher who's been with us and served our district for a long time that put in her, in her paperwork for early retirement. This is Renee Schmidt, so kind of bittersweet.
Okay. With that, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Okay. And next, we have our public forum. So we have two people who would like to speak. Davis Spire?
Right here or?
You can come on up here and. Yep.
Been kind of a busy couple of weeks here. As the board probably knows, five kids left for wrestlers, left for state today. They're on their way as we speak. Anyways, I'd, uh, like to read this, um, regards to the conference, uh, possible vote tonight. Two thousand twelve, I had a time in my life with many major changes. We had five kids at the time and my health was deteriorating. In a span of about a year and a half, I had two shoulder repairs, a wrist surgery, and two double hip replacements. Most of you know that I do, uh, construction for a living, so at that time I had a lot of difficult decisions to make. Anyways, after all this, I could have given up and taken the easier route in life. But chose to overcome the obstacles and work harder through the pain I endure each day of my life. When my kids tell me something is tough, I remind them that they need to overcome that thought and keep working hard as a family. We believe that hard work pays off. This past weekend, our wrestling team proved that. These kids worked hard. They work in the off-season. They work to improve each week, each match. When they lose, they learn from their mistakes to make that next match better. They critique what they can possibly personally do to be better. In this, in the meeting this past Thursday, it was mentioned by a few that when they spoke to G L R. About how the change has been for them and that G L, G L R. stated that they were against, were now, were now for the change. We need to keep in mind, though, as a district, that G L R. shares both wrestling and football with Central Line. So us comparing to them isn't comparing apples to apples. I also feel this depends on who you talk to, as if I have heard from other G L R. that they don't care for this change. One concern I heard is that the boys, the basketball team, both girls and boys typically play six quarters. Total, as many schools don't have a full roster. Does lessening the high school game help them long-term? Especially if we have growth in the future and our ba, basketball, basketball team grows. The War Eagle Conference has only four schools with a wrestling program. All the other schools in the War Eagle share with a Suland Conference team. With these schools being smaller, they will potentially not have all the weights full. What will that look like if we travel over an hour to compete and the weights don't line up with ours? Less teams, less kids, less mat time. That isn't just a small cut. It's a potential, it is potentially significant. This year, we had great, great results individually for our wrestlers at the conference meet. As a team, we placed fourth with almost the smallest team and trailing by points from Sioux Center, who placed third. And twenty points from Central Line, who placed first. Not only do all these teams have most of their weights full, they also, they have multiple kids in each weight class. At districts, we did great individually and as a team placed second with a hundred and forty-one points. M M C R U., which is a War Eagle school or in the War Eagle district, and they had only forty-five points. So that would be one of the teams that we would be going against. Next year, we could easily achieve first as a team at both of these events. And that would be a great accomplishment and goal for our wrestlers. When we look at potentially wrestling in the War Eagle Conference, we not only see a downfall in the amount of schools that participate in the conference, which I believe is four. These schools are smaller. They could have open weight classes. So we travel a longer distance to wrestle a duel and risk the chance that there are open weight classes. Won't concede, coincide with our open weight classes. So not only are we up against less schools, but less wrestlers. I strongly believe we need to stay in the Suland Conference and work internally on our current programs. From additional pep rally to get these little kids excited about our sports, to motivated, motivational speakers, to adjusting coaching if needed. The ideas are, and listen, we need to dig in. I don't feel switched with, I don't feel switched with get more, we'll get more to participate. There is one senior and one junior in the wrestling program and two seniors and one junior in the basketball player program. I'm guessing both these classes have approximately fifty students each. Our community needs to work harder to grow. We need more housing, rentals, E T. C. in order to bring families to the community. It's a great place to raise a family with all the convenient businesses right in town. Parents need to continue to encourage their children to be involved, involved and challenge themselves. Also, one more thing I want to close it on here is the girls' wrestling is also a fast-growing sport. And we have a group of girls showing interest in the sport. We had one from our district go to state this year. With this in mind, we should look at having our, our girl wrestling program in-house for the next years to come. Thank you.
And, Mr. Hertz, you're gonna be reading on behalf of Dawson Byer? Okay.
Reading a letter on behalf of Dawson Byer, who was unable to attend due to traveling to the state tournament tonight, so. Here's what Dawson had to say. Leaving the Suland Conference would be a detriment to the success of Sibley O'Chedin Athletics. In the Suland Conference, we compete with top-level teams week by week, which prepare us for the state tournament. Iron sharpens iron and we move to a weaker conference where we might not be pushed week after week, then our success may dwindle even more. The Sulands competition gives us a realistic look at what the state competition teams will feel like. On behalf of the wrestling team, this would be a horrible decision for the wrestling team. We strongly believe that we have a shot at winning conference next year as a team. The War Eagle does not have the depth the Suland does, which causes a lot of uncertainty within our schedule. This means that our competition would completely rely on the grace of other schools wanting to compete with us. Instead of us having the certainty of a high-level duel schedule. In addition, if the competition is no different, then why move conferences? If we want to leave the conference for an easier schedule, well, then I ask you, do you think the competition at the state level will be easier? As a student athlete, my goal is to compete at the highest level I am capable of. And with us leaving the Suland Conference, that will hinder my goal and the reputation of Sibley O'Chedin. Do you want to have the honor of being a general? I want you to ask yourself if this is something you will regret looking back fifteen years from now. We can always leave, but we may never be able to come back. Instead of moving to a different conference, we need to get better. You may ask what we can do to compete in the Suland Conference. Well, here's what I suggest. First and most importantly, we need to put our heads together and put in work. Every, everyone, parents, coaches, and especially athletes, need to encourage each other to get better every day. Furthermore, we need to hire more coaches. The ones we have are amazing, but more coaches means further critiquing of the athletes, more knowledge and experience, and much more. I'm sure that the community can figure out more ways for us to improve. That was a letter by Dawson Byer.
Okay. We'll be on to our administrative reports.
Mr. DeZao will be here. We could, if you're okay with the agenda, he could do his part when he gets here. He's at his daughter's game, but he's on the way.
Sure. Mr. Hertz, would you want to go ahead then?
Yep, definitely. Um, so on general information, uh, you can read through that. I'll just touch on some highlights. We, uh, have been talking about and making plans for the I S A S. testing. That starts right at the beginning of April. I'm feeling good about that. We just finalized the high school registration handbook and made some changes. Uh, we've streamlined the math program to better align with having one and a half staff versus two full staff like previous years. That'll be shared between Ms. Krugman and Mr. Wedge, the mass responsibilities. We're also adding a careers class to better meet the, meet the needs of our students. We felt like there was a gap in that freshman sophomore year where we're not getting our kids a lot of opportunity in career exploration and post-secondary readiness. And that's what that class is aimed towards. That'll be taught by Mr. Vermeer, our business teacher. And also Mrs. Klinkenberg, our counselor, will assist in that, in that realm as well, so. Another area of change, uh, changing our, um, dual enrollment requirements from a G P. A. requirement to an I S A S. score requirement. That puts us better in line with the schools in our area. Um, and it's also an, an additional incentive for students to perform well on the I S A S. s. Gillian Klinkenberg, our counselor, went to a few meetings and the majority of schools in Northwest Iowa, that was the standard. They had to be proficient on the I S A S. s in order to take college-level classes in high school. And to me, the logic of it makes sense. If you're at grade level on your I S A S. s, that means you're probably capable of taking college-level classes. However, if you're not at grade level, then the focus should be on catching you back up to grade level rather than taking the college-level classes. Another change, requiring students to take, uh, required classes twice in the seats. The current policy would be if you failed first semester and second semester, then the following year you'd be eligible for credit recovery. We feel that the best place for our kids to be are in our classrooms with our teachers, not necessarily in credit recovery. So we're having them attempt it twice in the seats, so two full years. Uh, the way we can do that logistically is adding summer credit recovery. That's another thing that districts around us are doing to help kids get caught up versus having credit recovery built into the schedule as we have it now. So it helps us make up ground for those kids who do get behind. Interested in a change in alternative school. Currently, we've been partnering with N C. C. . We haven't seen a lot of success with that program. Um, we had, had a few students that were in it and we didn't see the success that we wanted to. There is an opportunity potentially to offer it locally through our public library. They just hired a new full-time employee who I think would be great with our students. Um, and I think Stan and, and Mary Earl have just talked briefly, um, about the possibility of that. But that is a local option versus our kids having to commute to Sheldon, um, to be in that program. That program would be for students who fall significantly behind, who even with credit recovery would not be able to graduate on time. Also potentially for students who behavior-wise just can't handle, uh, high school with two hundred students.
So we'll go to the library then?
Well, we've had some communication with the library. They're interested. We are looking for a change. So it could be a good partnership, but I think the, the details of that have to be kind of ironed out and then presented to the board, I believe.
Yeah, we'd look at doing it there. They feel they have the staff. Again, they're looking for ways. They've kind of mentioned to us to reach out for some of those partnerships. If it was a situation where we felt the student really didn't fit to go there or we were concerned like of extreme poor behaviors. We, we still have the partnership. We could use it in C. C. But, um, hopefully we have a little better control and idea of what's going on if they're here locally is the idea.
Professional development, we continue to work on our mentoring program and our tier-one M T. S. S. processes. Really excited, um, Katie Schroeder and Gillian Klinkenberg went to a restorative practice training at the A E. A. Just learning about, um, how to better develop community amongst staff and students. And we're really excited about that and looking at, uh, some additional trainings. I believe Kent and I are gonna go in June. They have another, uh, two, well, it's actually a three-day, three full days training, uh, to learn more about that. That could potentially be something that we bring into like our success time next year at the high school and middle school. Um, and then just continuing some discussions on problem solving and how we can train all licensed staff in that restorative practice if we go that route. And then activities-wise, as you've heard, uh, sending five boys down to state wrestling. Basketball has, uh, wrapped up. Lots of different things happening with large, large group speeches finished, but individual speech starting, uh, jazz choir, jazz band, lots of different things happening. F F. A. has gone to some competitions, so a lot, the high school's a busy place. Students coming and going and, and working hard at their, at their, at their different skills, so. And then staff attendance and our professional development attendance is at the bottom. Any questions about any of the things in my report?
Thank you.
A lot going on. Mr. DeZao, would you, would you like to go first or?
Chance to catch your breath and me first?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Maybe I'll do mine. Give them a chance to get caught up. Okay. So, um, just kind of highlighting and then some explanation on a few of the points here and some of the things that we'll be, we even talking about this evening here. But, um, in terms of the goals and things that I've been working on, um, goal number one, progress towards strengthening our district literacy and math scores. We've been having a lot of discussions on our staffing decisions and with regards to resignations slash retirements. And what do we feel, what do we need to have back in place to meet the needs of our students and staff? But yet, that fiscal responsibility and we've talked about with the decrease in, um, enrollment that we'll have to make changes, so balancing that out. And I'm gonna come back to that a little, in a little bit here. We have started working on, after we had our work session for P D. goals, using that to get our P D. schedule going for next year. Um, obviously, you've seen some of that work with just the discussion and the change in our calendar for next year. A lot of that just came out from our work session, so thank you as the board for doing that and leading in that. And looking at our curriculum and buying new resource materials, um, seeing where in the cycle, but also identifying a few places and, and, um, gaps that they maybe haven't had in a while. So we're trying to make those decisions as well in terms of our curricular purchases and meeting those literacy and math scores. Improving staff retention and engagement. I, overall, I've had good feedback on the staff financial forums. Overall, I've had good feedback on the staff financial forums. Spent a lot of time just going over the data and trying to present that in a way that's meaningful for them. We did a staff outing on a Friday night in January, an opportunity for some to attend. Trying to involve staff in the discussions and the work with our conference affiliations, just presenting and getting the data out there. And then updating you as a board, which I'll do here in a second. I'll come back to that, just where we are with staffing and the things that we filled and we haven't. And then the third goal, keeping our district financially viable and stable. The financial forums, again, site logic, doing a fair amount of work with them. So I'm excited to see what they're going to present to you guys for those that have a chance to be there on the March sixth, seven. I know I have it in here somewhere else. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. The sixth or the seventh when they come. Is it the seventh? Okay, thank you, Kendra. The work session there, they're going to kind of present some options that night and then things for us to discuss and go over as a, as a board. I think it'll be exciting. We've been working on our Save and Kendra and myself, the PEPAL projections, the funds, and what do we have to do for projects and continued maintenance and upgrades to the building this spring and summer, working on our management projections and then just the facilities planning in general, which I'll talk about in a second here. In regards to staffing, where we're at with some of the different things, just to kind of keep a running total and make you aware. So obviously, when Lindsay resigned, Barb Williamson, we said, is taking her spot, and we're not filling Barb's spot. She had been the interventionist the last few years, so that's one position we're not filling. Another position that we're, we're working on, Casey is right now interviewing and we're in the process of interviewing candidates for our high school English Language Arts position. BJ retired, but we're looking at kind of spreading that out within the department to cover, for lack of a better word here, to cover Renee's position with her resigning. We'll still have that eighth grade, obviously, English Language Arts and reading needs, but by having smaller sessions, yeah, smaller sections, excuse me, and spreading that among staff, that'd be another position we're not looking at filling at this time. And then he alluded to it in his report with the math position. Keith is back this semester doing that halftime, but just spreading that out among other staff. So right there, depending on how you count, two, two and a half positions that we're trying to absorb and spread that out. What other changes will happen, we don't know at this point. I know we won't have any early retirements because that deadline's passed, but what happens when contracts come out and things like that with the resignations, I don't know yet at this point, so. That's kind of just a few highlights. Questions? All right.
First of all, let me say thank you for the accommodations to allowing me to step in a little bit late to get to my daughter's basketball game or at least part of it. I do appreciate that support for our family as well. My report is, so I kind of consider this, we're, we're in the dog days of our school year right now. We're just really kind of grinding through. And so my report this month deals a lot with our winter assessments. Mr. DeZale, could you pull up the math screening attachment on there for me for now?
The math one?
Yeah, and then we'll go to the, yep. And so this is our winter screening. Actually, a full diagnostic through math, and so we kind of talked through this at this time last year. But things that I would like to point out here in our math is to see how the percentages move to the left, right? So if you take, for instance, the second grade line and go across, you see how the, the three percentages in that line were 4%, 72%, and 24%. That's where we were in the fall, but you'll notice how our staff is doing a really good job of moving those percentages to the left, right? So 4% grew to 19%, that were on or above grade level. The middle stayed about the same, but the, the percentage of students that are, are two or more grade levels behind, it dropped all the way to 4%. So, and you, I can go through that in each of those grade levels. It's very interesting because our, our eye-ready diagnostic breaks it down this way, which is a little bit different than our state reporting does. Our state reporting goes by proficiency, and so proficiency is in the 40th percentile. So they can be just a little bit behind grade level. So some of that, those students in that one grade level below would be considered proficient, but some would not be considered proficient. Kind of depends on where they fall amongst the continuum of students there. So that's why I chose to include this, as we have this data for our diagnostic, and just proud of how all of the teachers here are continuing that growth as we go there. So just kind of how to read that chart there. And then if you could go to the, the literacy one. So again, this, this one is structured more so you can see just overall proficiency. And so how, this is what we report to the state. And so very good growth there. We have a little bit of decline from fall to winter in our fifth and sixth grade, not because of anybody doing a poor job. Honestly, that's probably one student, maybe two, that were right on the border there. We are seeing some really good growth. I was hoping to be able to do some growth scores. Part of our school performance profile is our growth, and we talked a lot about working on making sure that we get a full year's growth out of our students, no matter where they're at. If they're way two grade levels below or if they're at proficient, can we still get that grade levels growth? And so not included in this data, but some of the conversations I've had with staff is the growth that we're seeing is good, and so that's an encouragement there. And so we'll continue to work on these. I just think it's a great opportunity to have those open conversations. Again, not as a, a demerit to anybody, but just how we can continue to evaluate and improve systems and processes and, and continue to look at is what we're doing meeting, meeting the needs of the students. So that's really the biggest thing I wanted to talk about, and I think Mr. Hertz talked about this a little bit in his report. But we are preparing for our ISASPs test here coming up, starting in the beginning of April. And so those preparations are coming along well. So in terms of professional development, we continue to spend a lot of time on our MTSS process, having meetings around the support system, MTSS, the multi-tier system of supports, the support system that we can put in place for staff and students, and then also our mentor, mentor mentee program. Takes up a substantial amount of time, but for good reason, so. We've also had some discussions about restorative practices and restorative circles. And again, I think that's repetition from Mr. Hertz's report, but would fit in very well from the social-emotional component into our MTSS processes. So very excited about that, looking forward to attending the training in June and seeing how we can kind of bring that, bring that to our district in terms of supporting kids and, and staff as well, so. And then the staff attendance is listed there per the board calls, so. Any questions?
Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you for your reports and Mr. DeZale as well. Okay, our board committees.
So we didn't meet. The policy committee had met a lot before the last meeting, so they made up for that. Facilities, I got to get something scheduled with that. I've started getting some quotes and some potential projects as Kendra and I have been working through what are PEPAL and SAVE dollars to get an idea of what we have to spend on, on that, and then maybe prioritize, prioritize what projects we want to do. So I just need to get that kind of set up and meet with those on that. And finance as well, I know I said at the beginning of the year to the board, we were hoping to do contracts negotiations earlier. I said that to the teachers, and we've had great communication. And then the legislature's talking about an increase in teacher pay, well deserved, we want that. But they're uncertain of how that funding will work, and so that's why that's kind of on hold right now. So not that deal time of uncertainty to step in and be doing this for the first time as superintendent, but we'll, we'll figure it out. So that's kind of why that's at. I might schedule something with that and just look at where we're at. But in talking to other schools, a lot of them have not really moved forward yet. They're starting to see some just because of us being in the middle of February already, but there's not been a lot of movement there because you're just waiting to hear what the legislature's going to do. And like I said, very supportive anytime increasing teacher pay, but got to kind of know the details behind it. Kind of important, so.
Okay. Moving on to recognition of excellence.
All right, for recognition of excellence, last week was National School Counselors Week, so a big thank you to our three school counselors, Mrs. Earl, Mrs. Jensen, and Mrs. Klinkenberg for all they do to support our students, both academically and social-emotional behavioral needs as well. Recognition for SULAND Conference wrestlers, Michael Block, conference championship, SULAND All-Conference First Team, Dawson Byer, conference champion, SULAND Conference All, or All, for All-Conference First Team, Easton Byer, conference champion, SULAND Conference First Team, Aiden Byer, SULAND All-Conference Second Team, and Kane Julius, SULAND All-Conference Second Team. The following wrestlers qualified for the state tournament at the district meet in Emmitsburg on February 10th. Dawson Byer, Aiden Byer, Easton Byer, Dominic Marco, and Michael Block. Congratulations to those young men. Our FFA sub-district convention, Reagan Ruchi plays first place in Prepared Public Speaking, and Katie Krueger plays second place in FFA Creed Speaking. Both will advance to district competition on March 2nd, 2024. Ben Byers was selected to run for the Northwest District FFA Officer Team. Elections will be held on March 2nd, 2024 at the District FFA Convention. Honor band, the following students were accepted and participated in the USD Quad State Honor Band in February, Keaton Crowett, Natalie Weber, and Maya Poland. These students put in two days' worth of rehearsals and gave an outstanding concert at the end of the festival. Honor bands are an excellent opportunity to showcase the talents we have at Sibley O'Chedin and for students to get to see how they can stay involved in music after they graduate from high school. For honor choir, Caitlin Nobles has been chosen by the ACDA as a member of the MWA-CDA Honor Choir in Midwestern Region. She performs in Omaha on February 8th through the 10th. Jazz choir, our Sibley O'Chedin Jazz Choir Night Sounds, a member of the group, participated in the IHSMA State Jazz Choir Festival and received a Division One rating from all three judges, and that is the highest rating they give, so. Impressive accomplishment. The January Generals of the Week, and here are the generals. So for January 5th, for the elementary, Letty Krueger; for the middle school, Ava Hench; for the high school, Draven Philip; and for staff, Jenna Helmers. On the 19th, elementary, Elijah Treewiler; Sienna Cardio for the middle school; high school, Gavin Stanton; and staff, Lucinda Lemke. And we missed a weekend there due to several snow days, so we didn't have one, one of the weeks. And then the final, yeah, hopefully the last. And then finally, January 26th, our elementary General of the Week, Aiden Howard; middle school, Gwen Lingle; and Gannon Garnett; high school, Dalton Dake; and for staff, Tony Beavers.
Thank you very much. I want to add just a caveat here. I happened to be subbing for one of the middle school teachers when the Generals of the Week were announced, and one of the students was in the class and had her name called. And you would have thought she won the lottery. It was a really cool thing to see. And her friend was so moved by it that she was crying. She was so happy for her. So that was a really, really cool thing to see. So moving on, discussion items. We'll continue with our literacy goals presentation.
Mrs. Mans and Mrs. Nag are here.
I'll go over here. Well, I'm Jean Nag, and I have K through five literacy leader. And just thank you for the opportunity for me to come and speak. And thank you for pulling those upstand, too. These are some of the questions that were formulated back in November by Mr. Kent DeZale. He'll formulate these questions along with Maria and I, and the K through five teachers answered these questions. You know, as a staff with any subject, we're constantly striving to look at our curriculum. How can we make it better? Amplify, we're in our second year, and we'll continue. How do we make it better? So as a staff, what do I expect students to know? Just very, very briefly, going from kindergarten all the way up to grade five, six, from letter sounds to decoding to retelling, fluency, do they understand the text? Is their comprehension with the text? And with their writing skills, too, can they form sentences and have mechanic skills? And how will I know what the students know? Well, we do assessments, formative and summative, teacher observation, oral reading, the A reading, the fall, winter, spring, and I know Mr. DeZale kind of touched on that a little bit, the ISASPs, which are coming in March, April, and then writing assessments. And what will we do if they don't know the curriculum? Well, we have to look at different strategies. We have to make sure that we're meeting the students' need. That means maybe through more practice, maybe look at the curriculum more, review interventions that we have for students that are not up to par, consult with instructional coach, consult with, consult with the data team or principal, problem solve, and small group reteaching. Also, the different uses of graphic organizers and have students track their own progress. And what will we do if they do know it? Obviously, we're going to challenge them with different types of literature, expose them to different things, teach with fidelity, challenge those vocabulary skills, and creative writing contests that are offered through the AEA and through different contests in the area.
I'm Maria Mians, and I am 612 English Language Arts, 912 Spanish, and 512 ELL. So my group is diverse, which is fun and challenging. So first, I'll talk my sixth through eighth Amplify. We are entirely online, sixth through eighth grade. So what we did, and I shouldn't even say we, Katie Schroder did a lot of this work for us. She was so helpful. We did a curriculum map of sixth, sixth through eighth grade and all of the texts that are taught in each unit. So I don't know if you can pull that up, but maybe I shared with you. It looks like this. It's a chart, and we have it set up so that you can mark the box and then it crosses it out. So each teacher made a copy of this, and as they're teaching their units, then they mark the box that they taught that. So for us at the high school, we know which texts are taught when. This year, since last year's the first year of Amplify, we've had a few texts that have been overlapping since we didn't know all that was being taught at the sixth, seventh, and eighth level. So now hopefully, we can eliminate some of the overlap, and we know exactly what's taught when. This covers all the short stories and poems and things like that. Yeah, there it is. So that's really helpful for us at the high school level to know everything that's taught at the middle school level, but also for the middle school teachers to know, too, of, oh, hey, I'm teaching that, too. And it, it's just, it's been really helpful, so. That's what we did for sixth through eighth. We also updated the plagiarism, plagiarism policy, how it currently reads the middle school and the high school policy. I'm going out of order, sorry. It's number one. The middle school and the high school policy actually reads the exact same way, and there was a lot of kind of gray area that especially my upperclassmen can find some holes and work around. So we wanted to make it as black and white as possible and eliminate those little loopholes. But we also didn't feel like a fifth grader should be punished the same as a senior. So we changed it. We have the middle school policy right there that we define what is plagiarism, what counts as plagiarism, and how we're going to document that. What students struggle with is that you get three offenses. You don't get three offenses in English, three offenses in science, three offenses in history. It's three cumulative offenses, and right now, we don't really document all of that in GMC, so it's really hard to know how many offenses they actually have, where are they at? So we're streamlining it, that we're going to document it in GMC, so everybody knows all of the offenses that they have and hopefully make it easier to identify. But then, if you look at the middle school offenses, we changed those punishments that it's a lot more of reteaching and helping them and giving them opportunities to fix those errors. Whereas Page Two is the high school policy. Whereas page two is the high school policy. A senior, if they're plagiarizing, they're doing it on purpose. They know what plagiarism is, they've had plenty of opportunities to grow and change, and they're choosing to plagiarize. So punishments at the high school level are a little bit harsher than at the middle school level, since at that point, they know exactly what they're doing. So we're hoping, and June is when you approve the handbook policies for next year, so we're hoping that you will approve our changes to the plagiarism policy. We also updated it to include artificial intelligence, AI, since that is the future of plagiarism, at least in the English. You know, ChatGPT can write a paper for you, so it's usually pretty obvious when a student does it, but still. We included it in our plagiarism policy, since that is unfortunately our future. So please do consider updating that and approving that policy. We worked really hard on it and did several drafts to make it as fair as possible and better for our students, so. And then, I really want to recognize Renee Schmidt and Vijay Shuler. I'm losing two really awesome teachers in my department, I'm really sad to see them go. They have over sixty years together of teaching experience, that's a lot we're losing. They've been great mentors to teachers, I've worked with them for ten years, and I will miss them greatly. So I'm really sad to see them go, but happy, happy for them. With that, we streamlined our English classes. Mr. Hertz kind of, and Mr. DeZale kind of already mentioned a little bit. So we are now changing, high school is observing eighth grade. So eighth grade will be split into two sections. I will have one section, and the new person will have a section as well. So we will now be eight, twelve at the high school level. We are changing to, English nine is now English Language Arts one, and we'll have English Language Arts one, two, three, four, so just four years of English. Up until high school, there's been a literature class, and there's been an English class, where a literature class, you learn reading skills, and in English class, you learn spelling, grammar, writing, it's been separate. At the college level, it's also separate, there's a literature class and there's an English class. So at our high school level, up until now, it's been combined into one class, where English nine is literature and English. So we're going to split that up again. I'm going to take the English side, so I'll be doing all the grammar and the writing, and the new person will take the literature side. We'll both have all, well, at this point, all five grades, and at semester, we'll switch. So half the students will have me in the fall, and then the other half will have the other person in the fall, and then we'll switch so that we can keep their education consistent, K through secondary, post-secondary education. So I think it'll be a lot beneficial to our students that will now be able to have four solid years of writing that can build on each other, since it's the same person teaching it, and that our literature skills will be able to build a lot easier, since the same person is teaching it. So we're very excited about those changes, and yeah, we have a person we are interviewing tomorrow, so I'm excited about this person, so we'll see how it goes, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have our fifth and sixth grade Iowa Storyteller Presentations.
I'm Mrs. Shuler, I teach fifth and sixth grade social studies. This is Addie, and this is Blaine, they're both sixth grade students, and they're going to explain our short field trip to the library, short distance-wise.
So on January fifth, the fifth and sixth grade students attended the Darren Crowe, Iowa History Storyteller at the Sibley Public Library. Mr. Crowe presented three different stories throughout the day, three different groups of fifth and sixth grader students, as his stories all related to the history of the European settlers who came in Iowa in the eighteen hundreds. Darren Crowe was able to tell us that stories pictured in our mind, like how he was very detailed and explained things very well. He was very energetic and aesthetic, and we would be very creative with his stories and very hilarious as well, which we made really enjoy his stories. One story was a group of Dutchies who left the Netherlands to perceive the region freedom. The Netherlands of the Kingdom ordered people to attend the same church. Some people did not care for this and had to practice their religion in the fields and in boats. The king found them each time and told them to stop, or they would go to jail. The group decided to leave and join the colonies where they heard Iowa was a place where religion tolled and did not have slavery. The group of seven hundred had a long journey across the Atlantic, train to the head mountains of covered wagon to Ohio River steamboats on the St. Louis Walk through Pell, Iowa.
Another story was about the southern border of Iowa. The first surveyor of the Iowa border marked the borderline with mounds of dirt. The dirt washed away and the argument over the borderline began. Missouri people were upset with the Iowans when they claimed over the borderline, when it became over the bottom county, country, counties. As a result, there was a honey war. Some thieves from Missouri crossed the border and stole honey trees, which was a source of money for Iowans. The original surveyor's notes were used in the Supreme Court to determine the actual borderline. After ten years in court, the judges ruled in favor of Iowa, mirroring the Iowans reclaim the bottom nine colonies of Iowa. Darren Crowe's last presentations, a series of small stories. One was about the famous steamboat in the Blue Museum, which was the fastest steamboat at the time. Mr. Crowe said that the boat was so fast it ripped off feathers from pigs, so now pigs can't fly. It carried cargo, cargo, and the passengers to St. Louis. Another story was about how immigrants to Iowa went up the Mississippi River looking for flat land to farm. After farming, they were able to put their produce on flat boats and sell it downriver. This was an awesome experience.
Nice job. You were very good, yeah. Thank you.
Moving on to our two-minute board policy, I announce moments.
So I don't have a fancy activity with M and Ms and your priorities or anything like that, but a lot of talk in the last month legislatively on a lot of bills potentially coming through and their impact on education, and so just kind of talking through some of that and the things, and you'll hear, at least we have in our position, been hearing about, you know, bring it to your board and the importance of the board and their vote and local control, and talking about the impact. And so, one of the things there, and reminding your board their input and impact, excuse me, and local control, and so just talking about that, yeah, that is one person, one vote, that's not your strength, that's together as a board, and reminding you of a couple of our policies on the board. Powers of the board, what it's given, jurisdiction over matters within the territory of the school district, and you'll see why I'm pointing these things out in a second, and trying to make you aware of a few things here. The second one, it talks about the three main things that the board oversees. The board is entrusted with funds responsible overseeing the improvement of student outcomes, academic achievement, and skill proficiency. As the governing board, the district has three duties to perform, legislative, executive, and evaluative. The legislative is basically summarizing, talking about enforcing and enacting policies. Your executive duty is hiring and keeping in line the superintendent, and making sure that they act on the board's authority, and so forth. The third one, what I want to point out, and what we'll get to here, it says, "The board has a responsibility to review the educational program's performance under its evaluative duty." Obviously, some of that's been going on tonight in the reports you've been seeing. The board regularly reviews the education program and the ancillary services. The review includes study examination of the facts, conditions, and circumstances surrounding the amount of funds received or expended, and the education program's ability to achieve the board's education philosophy. Well, a lot of talk has been going on about the AEA and the funds that go to the AEA, and the services, and whether they're of value tonight, so that's one of the things I wanted to talk to you about and make you aware of that. So this is a sheet that some of the AEA's have shared to try and, I guess, publicize and make known their importance and so forth. They were trying to give a list of, in our district, the number of just different PD trainings or online trainings, and the value of that and so forth. So this year, we get what's called flow-through dollars, so we get three hundred, it's just under three hundred and thirty, I think that exact number's like three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And so that's money that comes from the state, because the AEA doesn't directly get the money, it comes to our district and it flows through and goes to the AEA. Roughly forty-four thousand of that is for their media services component, and forty-nine thousand is for the ed services, so over two hundred and fifty thousand roughly is for specifically special education services. And so, and you can see, I'm not going to go through this whole sheet, there's things maybe that I agree with, things that maybe they're stretching a little bit here, and we all know, like anyone, we're not a perfect district either, and we can improve on things, and we know the AEA. But one of the services that's invaluable, so this is next year, the projected dollars that we will get in state funds that would flow through to the AEA is three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. That's projected, or the estimate for next year, for the next fiscal year, if you take out the forty-four and forty-nine, so eighty-five, eighty-nine thousand, it's about three hundred thousand specific for the special ed funding. What I want to point out with that, three hundred thousand just for special ed seems like a lot of money. In a district our size, and the way that we use some of those services, I don't know that we could provide it for that cost on our own, or find people to staff that, and so that's kind of the importance. I'm not saying it's a perfect system, but the benefit they do provide us, because of the scale and the scope, is beneficial. They tried to list roughly if, in our Northwest AEA, the number of assistive technologies, people that specialize in that, if you divided that by the number of districts, what their FTE is. It gets a little technical. What I want to point out is regardless of if the AEA has this funding in positions or not, when we have students that are in special education, an IEP, we're required to provide those services. And if we say, oh, we can't find a speech pathologist, do you think the parents are going to be, that's all right? We won't, no. And the court's not going to find that either, whether we can staff someone for that or not. So that's why it's important. Some of the key positions, so if you say we got a little over three hundred thousand for education, down here, it says special ed consultant, and they're saying we have point seven five or three-quarters of a person. So who they're referring to there is Amanda Try, she is our special ed consultant, and I would say we get more than three-quarters of a person benefit out of her. We're the only district she serves, other than two private schools. She's not always here on Fridays, because they do their AEA meetings, but she's basically in our district Monday through Thursday. Her role is helping with those IEP meetings, providing support for our special ed teachers, for our administrators. I think over the last few years, if you would look, that the value in that position is tied to the person that we have. Maybe we haven't had the best in the past, but we have a good one now in Amanda, and she provides a lot of value for that. If they would, the AEA's special ed services were cut, I think that's a position we would have to look to fill, and just staffing one position, when you talk about salary and benefits like that, you're pushing already probably a third of the dollars of three hundred thousand. Speech pathology, they have as, where was it on here?
Second, third from the bottom.
Third from the bottom, thank you. Point seven-two. How many districts does Kayla, our speech pathologist, serve?
Mainly us, but I think she's a lot like Amanda in terms of getting to a few other buildings. I'm not a hundred percent sure on her schedule.
And I didn't know that either. I thought she had another district, but maybe it's mainly us or whatever.
It is mainly, I mean, point seven-two, you know what I mean?
Right, that's what they're estimating, or she's part-time in another district, so that's someone, yeah. We're not employing them, but we're using those services whenever an IEP calls for that. And sometimes kids in the lower grades might just be on a speech IEP, because that's the only services that they need. And a lot of these others, I'm not going to go through every one, but at any given time, depending on the needs of your students, some of them at a meeting might only need our administrator, Amanda, who I was referencing will come, and the special ed teacher. But sometimes they have unique needs, and it's not uncommon to have a meeting where we have eight different people there, because maybe they need an audiologist, they need an occupational therapist, they need a physical therapist, they might need someone who specializes in orientation and mobility. When we need those things, that's who we can go to, is the AEA. I just think of just even a yearly meeting, if we had eight different people at the table, to now ask these guys to find someone who can provide those services, call them up, and then get a schedule for everyone to come at the same time, just the amount of time that would take. Whereas now, you can call the AEA and it's coordinated. And then, one of the counters is, well, if we limited the AEA's, we'd put these in the private market. I don't know, there'd be a lot of orientation and mobility specialists who would look to center themselves in Sibley O'Chedin. I'm just being real with that, you know what I mean? That's a pretty specialized thing. Or we have a student this year that receives services, visual services, because of blindness. I don't know that we've had that in the last few years, but we staff that with a specialist through the AEA. So just kind of when that, when you hear those conversations going on, and we've been reaching out, the importance of the AEA, and that when you get questioned of that, kind of you guys as a board will understand a little bit of where those monies come from, and the importance that they serve our district, because I really feel that we get more value than the three hundred and eighty thousand, just from the special ed side of things. Questions about that, or anything that I said, or points of contact there?
Are they coming down at Des Moines on that, anywhere?
Great question. They give you a different answer every day. The last I was told, the House side, the bill's dead, but I was also told, no bill's dead down there till the sessions, because it can always be revived. The Senate side, it sounds like they have more traction on bills. They haven't told us what the changes will be, but they've gone from initially where the dread and fear was almost eliminating them and putting all the money back on the schools. I don't think that'll happen, or they'll at least give us a little time before that does to react, because, like I said, they'd eliminate that now. I don't know how we'd find and staff these positions when that need arise, and you can't predict that. You just don't know. So, that's the last I heard, when I was talking about the importance of teacher pay and funding. The unfortunate thing with that is that's tied into this bill right now. It'd be nice if that was separated, so that could move forward separately from the AEA bill. Right now, that's in the same bill, unfortunately. So hopefully, they can get some traction there.
Why is there such a push to eliminate the AEA?
I don't know. I have theories, but they're not real. I mean, they're not necessarily like the truth for what we know. They might be, but I can't prove it.
I mean, the governor is the one that started it.
Right. I think she has political reasons. Haven't really seen anything like that.
I don't fully know. I don't have a way to prove, I have ideas, but that's really all they are.
I would say we are very fortunate to be in a very strong education agency. I think the Northwest AEA overall did a really, really good job.
I think that's.
We're very fortunate.
Yeah, true, it's probably one of the higher-rated ones in, just all the education speak from the governor and the legislator last year is what's frustrating is a lot of the times when they're pointing out issues or saying negative things, they'll even admit, well, we're not talking about Northwest Iowa. Well, that's great, but when people hear that, they assume that applies to everyone. And I even met with her on Friday, and she said that. I don't think that Northwest AEA has the same problems we're seeing in other parts of the state, but it's still going to affect us.
Because we essentially have to come up with these people if they...
Mm-hmm.
Is there any talk about how soon they are thinking, if they... The way I understand it, they're not thinking of getting rid of everything.
The last proposal had originally that March one, they would cut like the directors and all this stuff and make these changes. That's gone back now to June one, and if, my understanding was, we would have an option as a school to sign up, whether we want to have our money go there and get their services or not. That's great, but when you're doing budgets and staffing, like as a school, we have to have our budget in by the end of April, the AEA is the same way. So I don't know, unless they make an exception for them, when you have to have your, you don't find out from Sibley O'Chedin until May thirty that we're putting our flow-through money to you, how do you staff that? So I don't know, unless they make an exception for them, when you have to have your, you don't find out from Sibley O'Cheaton until May thirty that we're putting our flow-through money to you, how do you staff that?
When you say March or June, are you talking twenty-four or twenty-five?
They were talking this year. Yeah. That was the original. So they backed off the cuts on March one of this year so far. I guess it could come back, but.
Something maybe not everybody in this room is really good at. I know I am not, but a good reason to write our legislators so that they know how we are affected by the services that we receive and how we would be at a real loss without them, so. Okay. Anything else on that? All right. Moving on to new business. Consider approval of changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four district calendar.
I kind of made my comments at the beginning. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So with that.
To consider approval for the changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four district calendar.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay. Say none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is passed. Onto the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five district calendar. Any additional comments on that?
Nope. And the only thing I would add is if the legislature would put something in place to change the start date, obviously then we'd come back and have a forum to show the change.
So you wouldn't start on the Friday then probably?
No, I think, I think just to, and to give us a little flexibility of just a few more days before Christmas because right now, I mean, it's always going to be unbalanced, but they'd make it a little bit evener.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five district calendar as presented.
Okay, second, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is passed. And forgiving missed time for seniors.
The code allows seniors to miss, I think it's up to five days or thirty hours of instruction, which is already built in our calendar. If we, like we are this year, that we just voted and approved why this agenda items after that, we add additional days to the end to make up. The board has to have a motion to excuse seniors from making up those missed days due to inclement weather if they have met their district's graduation requirements. And obviously we would put that in place and make sure they've met that. So you're voting to approve forgiving that time added to the end of the year for seniors?
Which is typically normal, right?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the forgiving missed time for seniors.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Next is consider application to join War Eagle Conference and lead the Soul Land Conference.
So just to read the summary, it says conversations have started between myself and Mrs. Elf, sir, our activities director, about the possibility of leaving the conference and joining the War Eagle. Community forum took place last week, Thursday, the eighth, at seven PM in the auditorium. And the presentation with information was given to staff and students and families with the opportunity for questions at the end of the forum. A survey was then sent to the families, students and staff to gather some input. Information from that will be presented tonight, and I'll go over some of that I've shared with you today already, if you have the chance to view that. And then you guys will have a discussion, and I'll try and answer any questions on what we want to do. Trying to find where, oh, there, there we go. So this, I add, since I shared it with you, I did add one slide that I just didn't have time to earlier. I did put the link on there, but if you're looking at just the PDFs of it. He's not really keeping up. There we go. So this was, and yeah, you guys can see the, I shared the original with you so that you see right where I pulled it off of, but just putting it on here for visuals. So we had two hundred and fifty-six responses. That doesn't include the few that didn't have a Google account, public-wise, that responded. And I think that was, I'm going off memory here, I have it at the end, another twenty-five responses, something like that. So we'd be at the two-eighty range total. So you can kind of see the breakdown of students, parents slash families, and staff members of who took this or who responded. And then this is kind of a breakdown, because this was the question on there, whether their family, staff, or then what grade they're in. Really doesn't tell you anything there. So this was overall of the two-fifty-six that respondents that took the survey via Google on there. Overall, the response rate was seventy-point-three percent in favor of applying for the War Eagle and then twenty-nine-point-seven staying in the Soul Land. If you looked at that, I just asked this for information, as I said last week, some of this we can't control because it's dependent on conference votes or what they would elect to do. But just information, if you, if we would go to the War Eagle, would you prefer to attempt to enter during the next school year or wait until twenty-five? Or the following year, I have typo there, if you prefer staying, or if you prefer staying in the Soul Land. You can see of those sixty-four percent said for the next year. I don't know why that didn't copy on there, but whatever the remaining is, twenty-four and ninety-seven, so six, eight percent of people said for the following year. And then everyone else, obviously, who voted to stay would have said that on here as well. So what wasn't on there, I tried to just do some different filters and then show that response and break it down by some of the different groups. So we had roughly seventy parent and family members, as you can see from up here, roughly twenty-seven percent. That came down to about seventy family members. So of the families slash parents that responded, sixty-seven percent said apply to the War Eagle. Thirty-two, just under thirty-three percent to stay. Of our staff, we had sixty-three that responded. Nine and a half percent stayed in the Soul Land. I believe that was six people said that, so then fifty-seven people, which was ninety percent, said apply to the War Eagle. Students, there was overall sixty-one, almost sixty-two percent to the War Eagle, and then thirty-eight percent for staying in the Soul Land. And then I just kind of broke it down by grade. So nineteen seniors, so a little over half, sixty-eight percent. I, I included them in, and obviously they're not going to be here next year or the year after, but I included them in that. Thirty-one percent stay in the Soul Land. And here we have juniors, that was split down the middle. Sophomores, fifty-eight percent in the voting to move to the War Eagle, forty-one percent for the Soul Land. Ninth grade, about half, one or two votes off out of that, probably eight and seven, probably if it's fifteen. Eighth grade, we had thirteen responses. Eighty-five percent roughly for the War Eagle, fifteen for the Soul Land. And then seventh grade, fifteen responses as well, seventy-three percent to move and twenty-six percent to stay in the Soul Land. We had talked, right or wrong, I just did the cutoff there. I thought it was hard to fully understand that decision that should get younger, you know, you know what I mean? There's some that are really into sports, but even in seventh grade, some of them don't know that's a thing. So that's, I just cut it off there. That's just what in talking with Amy, we kind of discussed, and I thought would be a good grade to cut it off at. This was those that took it via survey, excuse me, Survey Monkey. If they didn't have a Google account, just another option, and there were twenty-five that took that. And so I didn't factor that in, but you can roughly see the percentages are the same as the overall rate in what we did earlier, just to show that. Sixteen voted for, sixty-four percent for the War Eagle, nine for the Soul Land. So I think you'd seen it through that. I added this last slide. This isn't percentages or any, anything, but it was asked. And it doesn't really indicate one way or the other, but it was asked at the forum when I was talking about our free and reduced. And I had someone ask about me personally about that since then, so I just thought I'd put that on here because I didn't have that data collected or anything, and they just asked, how do we compare to other schools? So I got this done today with some help from Kendra. So our free and reduced count, we're at fifty-point-seven percent of our students are in free or reduced lunch. That's what that means. So fifty-point-seven percent of our students. And then I just put the percentage for each school in the Soul Land below there, and then I just went highest percentage to lowest. If I missed one up, I apologize. I might have put it out of order, but it should be roughly highest to lowest percentage. Unity and Western would be at zero because private schools don't qualify and have a free and reduced lunch option. And then I did the same on the, the War Eagle side, just to show that. Since that was a question that was asked last week, and I said I hadn't really looked at that, I mean, I knew overall, but I hadn't I didn't have a slide of data on that, and someone else asked me that, so I just thought it'd be worth throwing on there in case someone asked you guys that question. So that's kind of the compilation of that. That's obviously just one piece of the pie. So I guess a little discussion or questions that you guys have now or anything else that you need?
I guess my biggest concern is, is I don't know how switching conference is going to get more kids to be involved when we're lacking already with looking at that senior and junior class having such small participation. I have personally, even before this came up, reached out to kids, asking them why they're not involved. And I've never heard that it's due to this. It's more been like, I choose to work instead, or I just don't want to. I want to be there to cheer them on, but I just don't feel like participating. So, and then my concern is, is if, if a change would get more kids to go out, is that the quality versus quantity? Like you got to look at that too, and where is it going to benefit us moving forward? And then I think overall, if you look at the whole picture for our district, we have a lot of good success in a lot of our programs. I mean, there's a few bumps in the road, but even those, I mean, our girls is down now, but look at when my daughter was in high school, they weren't winning anything when it started. And by the time she graduated, we were just about to the state level, and then the year after, there we were. And then that state appearance, if I didn't draw those girls in, I mean, what else is more exciting than seeing your team achieve that success? So those are some things that hold a concern for myself, like, this is the right choice. I feel it's a good conference to be in.
Those were some of the concerns that I had for people that reached out to me too, was just, is, is it really going to increase kids coming out? And, and I think that's something we have to think about. Yes, we look at our enrollment numbers when we look at those projections, but yeah, I, I would kind of have to agree too. It would be nice to have a crystal ball and see what's going to happen, but we don't. So, I don't know. Anybody else? Thoughts? You're out there officiating?
Yeah, I know. I really think it's well
What do you think?
Down to a cultural thing here at Sibley. I really do. I think there's, there's some really good athletes that have come through Sibley. We've really participated well in the Soul Land and a lot of events. And right now it, it seems a little down or, you know, but to me, I just think there's stuff to do as a community, you know, it starts with our, with our parents, our community members and our athletes. You know, to get these people on the same page. I know our athletic boosters are working on a speaker to come in and know what that looks like as a, as a, as an athlete and a parent in a small community, what your kid's involvement in activities, what that means to a community. You know, we looked at like the girls, I mean, we morphed the attendance record down there or at the sessions that we were at. For girls' basketball, so you can obviously see there's, you know, the town is starving for something like that, right? But sometimes I wonder if we really want to put in the work to achieve some of that success.
And I see, you know, see lots of different schools. They have bubbles too, where they, you know, you see them one year and they're doing great. The next year you go and see them again and it's like, is this the same school? You know, I mean, it just, there's changes that happen there all the time too. Now, some schools are able to keep more of a higher level more stagnant or standard maybe, but they stay, even those schools have up and downs.
Just one question. Since we haven't had a girls' varsity basketball team, how long can we go in this conference without having one? Is there like consequences? Say you don't have one for so many years? Like how do we, if you stay in Soul Land Conference and you don't say have another girls' varsity basketball team, how many years can you go without having that before? They're like, hey, we can't keep doing this. You need to provide a team?
I don't know if there'd be consequences from the conference, maybe from the more from the state side of things.
Sure, I don't know. Amy?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Amy. Do you know?
Would there be consequences if long-term we didn't have a girls' basketball team conference-wise?
Or say like a boys', you know, how many years can you go without like a varsity level team?
I guess the number one goal is provide opportunities. We could go as long as we wanted, but I don't feel that's what's best for our kids.
Right.
There is no life to say.
Okay. I know I've had multiple people ask me this, so that's why I'm asking you guys.
I think that's what you're getting at, right? If there was a
Yeah, like is it, okay
A set rule of your third year
Yeah, like if you don't have a varsity team, then we have to figure something else to do with your program, like, you know?
Right.
That's what I'm asking.
That's why I hesitated, because I don't
Yeah, and I didn't know either. Nobody else knows either. That's why they're like, well, let's, what are the consequences if we can't do this, say a girls' team or a boys' team or whatever it may be at a varsity level? I was like, oh, I'll ask.
I don't know if that fully answered it, but I don't think there's a
It kind of did. I mean, if there's no like set consequences.
Yeah. It's not like if we don't do it after year two, now we're in
Right.
trouble or X, Y, Z. There's nothing like that.
I guess I also was asked, and I've kind of wondered myself, is there, is there urgency there? What, you know, what is the urgency? Or is it okay to give it, you know, give it another year, reassess? I don't know.
Oh, you absolutely could.
Okay, that's a possibility.
And like I said, I can't predict what.
No. We don't know what kids are going to do. We don't know enrollment wise, we kind of see those trends, but, you know.
Or, and I'm not hinting anything by this, I'm just saying, we could stay and do nothing. I can't guarantee that a year from now, the War Eagle, if we go, oh yeah, we have to do that, that they'd be open to it. They could be. I just don't know that answer, I guess.
Yeah. And we don't know if they would even approve us this year, right?
Correct, they could, they could.
They could, or they could turn us down. Okay.
I haven't got that indication, but yes, you're right, they could. And doing nothing, I'm pretty sure the Soul Land would keep us. You know what I mean? I'm being facetious, but that wouldn't be an issue.
Want to rush discussion here? Is there any other thoughts or?
I guess I've had a few students, parents just kind of say that, you know, maybe we need to be providing more opportunities for our athletes here in Sibley, bringing more like drills, camps back to town so that they don't have to travel so far to, in the offseason, you know, like during the summer. Yeah, it's great, you know, like the basketball boys, they have like a little high school camp thing, and then they do it for like the younger kids, but like even just for the basketball boys or the football boys or the wrestling boys, like something in the offseason, bring more stuff here for our athletes instead of having to look other places during offseason.
And maybe Amy could answer this. Are there some, I don't know, are there regulations on if schools can sponsor that, if that if schools can sponsor that, if that has to be like camps, and I know, like, I don't know, a long time ago, it used to be this way, but maybe things have changed. Can, can the school sponsor that? Does, like, athletic boosters or private, we, you know, get, like, the, uh, I'm trying to think of the showing boys did, like, a basketball camp, yeah, things like that?
Coach contact, or restrictions?
Coach run, or can?
There are coach contact regulations that you have to
Okay, yeah, that's what I, I guess, thanks for working that, figuring out my words for me. So we, we can't just, the coaches just can't hold camps whenever they want?
Once their season ends, they cannot have contact with them till the first day of summer.
Okay.
Which is typically June one.
Okay.
And then they get the summer, and then once that first ball practice starts, they lose their contact.
Okay.
And that just applies to high school, junior high is free range.
Free range, yeah. And expecting our coaches to do that in the summer would mean compensation. I mean, we have to think about that.
One thing I've been disappointed in the cup, the last two years anyway, Sibley has their youth basketball tournament. Both years, I can't remember what grade it was last year, we only had one grade. This year, we only have one grade. It's close, you'll never get a cheaper but it's, it's disappointing there, that we don't, and some of that, I think, is what Jamie said too, the culture thing that, that's around. It just, I think it needs help. I don't know the answer on that one, but.
Did you get a chance to read through some of the
Comments?
Comments, yep.
Those last comments, do you know what I mean, and a few others? It's interesting, 'cause some people's comments are, we need to provide more opportunities and practice more, and others are like
Right.
Stop, some commented, we'll just stop the youth teams altogether. Hard to do both.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, you know what I'm, you saw him, right, yeah.
I thought there were some really good points brought up in the comments, too.
Yeah.
I appreciate the people that took the time to fill out the survey and share their thoughts. Okay, so, um
I don't know, I guess my favorite, I'm right now anyway, I mean, I'm not, if we need a vote to do it, or if else we just table it?
Here's my opinion on options. If you're looking at going to the War Eagle, that would take a motion, right?
Yeah, right.
If we're looking at not doing it, doesn't need a motion, 'cause we're just staying in SULAN. So you won't have to have a motion to stay in it, we'd just say, we're not voting on it. I don't know if that answers what you were kinda get at. I guess if we were looking at tabling it for next year, I don't know if that's a motion either, that's just something that we can revisit later.
Yeah.
Because that doesn't necess, tabling it doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna, that would mean we're voting later, it just means we return to the discussion.
Right. So I guess what I'm wondering, think about.
Kendra, was there a?
No, I was just gonna say you needed general consensus, that it's just not left hanging.
Right.
Right, oh, I agree with that, I'm just saying, yes.
So, where's everybody standing? Anybody wanna speak first?
I would like to stay with the SULAN Conference.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay.
Same.
Yep, for the time being, I think so.
Okay, well then I think for now, we are we'll stay with the SULAN Conference, and we can revisit this next year if we need to, or think there's a reason to bring it up again. Okay, all right. Okay. Moving on then, consider approval of district property insurance rotation.
So our current, excuse me, our current rotation had more involved, was more involved, had more agencies involved, I guess is what I'm trying to get at, and through consolidations and changes, we need to have that updated, so the current one was with Tom Witzma, who's now with, um, FNIC and Don Butler, so that's our present one. Where we're currently at, so this spring, we would look at switching to Garter Insurance for the twenty-four, twenty-five and the twenty-five, twenty-six school years, and then after that, just kind of going to Hughes and Gay, Pearson for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then obviously, we'd just switch between those three, I think it used to be, is it five, Kendra?
Oh, there used to be seven.
Seven, okay, I would say when I, when I was here, I think five, but I go through that.
Yeah.
And we would use them as our agent to work through with EMC, who we currently use for that stuff. If that would change, obviously, if we figure out there's a better one to go through, there's not a lot of options in the property insurance in the school world, but if that would happen, then we, we could reveal, visit this as well. But that's why this is on here, the agenda, and need to vote on changing that rotation, is just to keep up with some of the changes with the different agencies that we have left.
Wasn't there one in O'Chedin too?
Kevin Hurst used to be there, he, that's now FNIC.
Oh, okay.
He retired.
He did retire, huh?
Nobody take over business.
Went into education.
I forgot who you're doing.
Good choice, Casey.
I think so.
Okay, so do we, um, do I have somebody who can make a motion on this?
Some of them.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor, staying with this rotation?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, wish them passed. Consider approval of operational sharing agreements.
Thank you.
All right, so the operational sharing. So, in the past, and I'll explain this, we have three, we're gonna, we will have two at the current time, so we also had a maintenance position on here in the past.
Nobody is wanting that date now.
Yeah.
So is mine.
Okay, that's what I was, well, I'll tell you what it is, so the transportation would be shared with HLP, that agreement looks like what it did in the past. Human Resources, HR would be shared, it, in the past, it was thirty-three percent with Emmitsburg, us thirty-three percent, and HLP thirty-three percent, that's, um, some additional duties with Chrissy Ackerman. And so forth, she helps with some board meetings and other do, and other things like that. So it would stay at a thirty-three percent with Emmitsburg. HLP wants to have that at twenty percent, they just say based on usage. Um, so they would cover twenty percent of that stipend, and then we would cover the remaining forty-seven percent, since that's where they're at. That's what that one does. In the past, we had, um, the maintenance position, it was shared twenty percent with GLR. At the present time, they, if they need to, it'll have to go in the next month, but they are not interested in doing that, they want, I think, something with a little more sharing, and potentially with Boyd and Hall, is what they're looking at doing right now, so that why, that is why that one is not on there.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the operational sharing agreements?
So moved.
Since they're separate items, let's do them separate.
Let's do them separate, okay, let's start with
I'll make a motion to approve the trans, sharing the transportation director as presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? And that one is passed. Human Resources Director?
I think it's Sibley, not the internet, so.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I make a motion to approve, uh, operational sharing agreement of the Human Resource Director with Emmitsburg and HLP.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one is passed. And consider approval of sharing agreement for the librarian.
So the sharing agreement for the librarian is with HLP, that does not have, um, operational sharing, so we don't get the students with that as we do with the, um, transportation and the Human Resources Director positions, where we get operational sharing dollars for that. We don't with, um, the librarian position, but you get shared costs. In the past, that's been a sixty, forty, so HLP had forty percent of the cost, and we had sixty percent of the cost, so she was here roughly three days a week. Um, HLP is interested in doing that next year, but it'd be at eighty, twenty, so we'd have her eighty percent of the time. They would have her twenty percent of the time, likewise, they're only paid twenty percent. Um, we have in the, this year, hired someone, and I think it started last year, is that right, Kent? With the middle school.
Library supervision.
Library supervision. Did we start that last year, does that sound right?
This year.
This year.
This year.
It was full-time this year, last time was
Last year was
Last time was half-time, this year, full-time, so someone that's serving as a middle school para-incessionally to cover that, so that position would not be offered next year, we would eliminate that para-position to kinda cover that cost, and I think we'd get more benefit out of having the librarian here four days. And they've already had discussions on how she would cover things, and is very excited to be here.
Okay, do I have anybody who would like to make a motion on that?
Some of them.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that one is passed. Consider approval of bus lease for three new buses.
So I'm doing this off of memory, um, so it's for three
We can't prove you wrong.
Three buses, if I remember right. We are out of the date of when they originally, um, supposed to come in, because we only had the two delivered, if you remember right.
You actually approved of this last summer, for five, um, but the timing of things didn't work, so we've done two, now we're doing the other two.
Yeah, two came in, three weren't delivered, and so it's an updated lease for those three, they are hoping they will be here on February, this is what I'm doing for memory here, twenty-four, I believe?
That's what I had in my head.
Right, I think so. They are finally actually in, I, I think they will be here, we, they've been telling us that since August. They are here, that they were held up, they were supposed to be here last week, but there was an issue with installing the cameras on there, so that's better than just saying, we don't know when they're gonna be here, they tell us next month, and then we still don't have them, so I do think they should be here on time, it was, they're at least at the dealership, and it was an issue with the cameras that we use to monitor poor student behaviors.
Do I have a motion?
Is there any, any price difference between what there was then and now?
Yes, it's slightly higher, I don't remember the difference, but it is higher. Which is part of the reason why we have to approve that, 'cause they, um, with that being outside the timeframe, aren't honoring the original price, because it's, they didn't get them in themselves, so.
They are honoring the original?
No, they're not.
But basically, it's the same bus?
Yeah. But the, they didn't get them from the supplier in that time.
Yep, and I can't remember, well, we got buses from MLC. You keeping that?
Two used ones, we did. So, 'cause we, we had sold one, we were looking for a used one. Anyway, that better fit our needs, but we weren't in dire situation, but then we, when we had the accident, being a short one, and then we had a day where one was in the shop. And we had the potential, if one went down, we would not have a bus. At that day, I remember, PMS was worried, 'cause we wouldn't have enough buses to do routes at that time, 'cause we're waiting on these lease buses and all this stuff to change out, but we got two used ones from MLC.
So we'll be sitting behind our buses with these three?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, is there a motion?
Some of them.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. Uh, set the date for public hearings on certified budget.
So, with the new requirements on budgets, we have to do two hearings now. We used to have to have one, and it, and we did it right before our April board meeting, and then we usually moved our April board meeting up, because you had to have the April board meeting for your hearing before the fifteenth, okay? Now you have to have it by the thirtieth, but we have to have two separate budget hearings on this, that's what's required. The first one cannot be before the twenty-fifth, right? And the second one has to be completed before the thirtieth of April. There's other steps involved that aren't directly involved with us, the assessor has to send out their notices on assessed tax values by the twentieth, so um, using those guidelines, we have to set the, you guys have to approve of the recommended dates for those hearings, and then we have to publish them in the papers and send notice, and they have to be out X amount of time, and give the public a chance. The disadvantage of doing this is, right now, we're already five weeks out from our March board meeting in terms of bills and things like that, which is a longer time, that works. We really can't extend it anymore, so the one hearing will be on a night when we don't have any other meetings. And all we're gonna do is have that hearing, it won't take very long, but we need to have a quorum for it, for it to, um, count. Matter if we don't have a quorum, we can't have the hearing, and then we have to republish dates. So the, the first one is the, was it actually the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Right, that's why, I know that's the
Does that date work for everyone?
Right, that's what our proposed date is anyway. Which would be at five-thirty in here, we would do a little, obviously, presentation on the budget, the budget and the specifics with it. Public has a chance to respond and comment now.
Yep, looks good.
I think it should.
Twenty-fifth of March?
Twenty-five.
Monday.
And we would not have another board meeting on that, I mean, we had talked about moving it back, but then we're six, we're like, six and a half weeks, that's too far between the meetings for bills and all that stuff, we just can't make that work. So that'd be the only thing on that night, if that works.
Yep.
Okay? The second hearing would then occur on the fifteenth of April at five-thirty, and that's the night of our normally scheduled April board meeting, 'cause it's the third Monday. It hasn't, doesn't have to do with the fifteenth, that's just by chance.
So that works out good.
Yeah. Technically, you only have to have them a day apart, I mean, I'm not saying we would do this, but how it reads, you have to have two separate ones, so you could do it Monday and Tuesday. The idea is so people can come and have a chance to respond to the second one. And we'll have a little more information and things to present at that first one, we'll be going, Kendra and I will be going to a budget workshop and financial planning next week, to kinda start diving into this, so.
Okay, so is there a motion? The recommendation has been made for the dates mentioned, March twenty-five and April fifteenth, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to have public hearings for certified budget, March twenty-fifth at five-thirty in the IMC, and the second public hearing on April fifteenth at five-thirty at the IMC.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It's passed. Budget guarantee.
So, by law, we're guaranteed a hundred-one percent of the current budget for the upcoming year, where this comes into play is when you have declining enrollment, and the increase in SSA isn't enough to overcome that. So it often kicks in, like I said, when we have declining enrollment. With us being down forty point one-nine students, we're gonna qualify for that, I didn't even calculate that, you can do that of what we, you can figure out, I know there's tools to figure out what you need in SSA, I'm gonna just tell you, it's not gonna be high enough to do that, there's, there's no way it will be, so we need to have a resolution, if, for some reason, we didn't need it, passing the resolution doesn't tie us to that, so that's the, the good thing, if, it just gives us the opportunity to have the budget guarantee if it's needed.
Okay, and I would note that sample language for the motion is there.
Yes.
And to read it that way.
I move that it be resolved that the Board of Directors of Sibley O'Cheam Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five for the regular program budget adjustment as allowed under section two fifty-seven point one four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one is passed, consider approval of sending RFP for auditor.
This, the fiscal twenty-three school year, which we did the audit on last fall, was the end of that This, the fiscal twenty-three school year, which we did the audit on last fall, was the end of that three-year contract with Nolte, Cornman, and Johnson, so we need to send out requests for proposals of the RFPs to auditors, and then you can approve them when they come in, but you need to prove us sending out the request for proposals.
Okay. Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve sending RFPs to auditors.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion is passed.
What'd you think of them, the, for the company?
They're good to work with, yeah, and there's may not be a whole lot of other options. There's schools that have been dropped by their auditors, or they just don't have the staff, and it's very hard to find a new one, so we're hoping that they wanna continue, and they're really good to work with. You know, I, talking with other business managers, one, um, school has one from Texas, which is very difficult, because they don't know Iowa law, so. Hopefully, they like us, too, and want to stay, keep having us.
Or they're two or three years behind.
Yeah, that's happening, too, yeah. It's a big problem. If you know anyone that wants to be a CPA and-
I was just gonna say, it sounds like we need to start business.
Yes.
There you go. Next is consider approval of termination.
So I just have the policy on there and included, and the name, the name of the person, recall. Rachel, so she says she's a custodian. Um, I do have the notice on there, that's just FYI, confidential docs, so the public doesn't see that, but you guys can read that, and you can see that, just so you're aware of that. That's not public, but you guys can see that.
Okay, is there a motion on this recommendation?
What was her name?
Rachel.
Can you say Rachel?
Hmm?
We can just say Rachel.
Yep, you can, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the termination as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is passed. Consider approval of new contracts.
So we have three, two are paid positions and ones are volunteer. The reason Doyle, he's been helping out, but we're approving that, is they have over twenty in the middle school. And at the end of the year, most of the meets they're going to are like three mats, so for one- for one person to go to, when you have twenty-some is hard to keep up with.
One paid junior high wrestling coach.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts as presented.
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Consider approval of open enrollment requests out.
So we have three, obviously, you can see the name, all from the same family, the Hytraders, so that would be the new hospital administrators, um, three children, they, they just moved in, um, and then are just open enrolling, as it says, to continue attending Sioux Center. Obviously, can't predict the future, and I've talked to them, their, their plans are to attend here next year, but they just didn't wanna change, and I don't blame them, schools mid-year with the ages of their kids.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this open enrollment request?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. And second reading of board policies with changes.
So, yes, these were the ones that had the bigger changes, changes and impacts. The next three things, this is second reading, the next one's a new one. And then to rescind one, um, things that we'd gone over with the policy committee and presented last month. When you make the motions on these, you would need to read them as listed in the title.
Who would like to make this?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of the board policies with changes reviewed. Four oh one point one three, four oh one point one three R one, four oh one point one three E one, all become seven thirteen, five oh two point oh seven, six oh five point oh six, six oh five point oh eight, six oh five point oh eight, point oh eight R one, seven oh one point oh one, seven oh one point oh two, seven oh one point oh three, seven o- oh one point oh four, seven oh three point oh one.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Second reading of new board policy, five oh three.
Good thing we can see this now.
On we go, motion to approve the second reading of new board policy, five oh three point oh eight R one.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried. And next, second reading of board policies to rescind, seven oh three point oh two. It's the one that was grouped earlier.
Yes.
A mo- a motion to approve the second reading of the board policies to rescind, seven oh three point oh two.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Before we moved into closed session, does anyone need to use the restrooms?
Yep, I can do that now.
Bathroom break?